Thank you. Hi. Call the Speaker for Water? And let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You might want to move your microphone to your right because I think it's picking up the speaker. There, that might help.
Can everybody still hear me? I think so.
Might help.
Thank you. Okay. Do we... Can I have the motion on the minutes from our last meeting, please?
So moved?
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Oh. Okay, so we have two remote members, actually, so we need to... Yes, we need to have them...
Can you hear them?
Here they are. Then we need to have a roll call.
I'm trying to turn up my volume.
All the way up, I can barely hear them.
Can you hear me better now?
I can hear you, Tammy. Can you hear me?
I can. And you're attending remotely, so we need to have you state your... where your location and if there's anyone around and the reason for your remote attendance. Jim, could you go first?
Yes, I'm in a... on vacation in a vacation home off of Cape Cod, and there's no one in the room with me.
Larry?
Yes, my name is Larry Heath. I'm on remote. I'm in my shop in my basement, and there is nobody here with me but me.
Thank you. Okay, so the minutes from our last meeting have been moved and seconded, so roll call vote. Don?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Aye.
Larry? Larry?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
An aye from me as well. That's unanimous, thank you. Okay. The payroll manifest is going around, I believe.
We have it already.
Okay.
Thank you.
There are no nominations or resignations. Superintendent's report?
Okay. Thank you. We have a number of updates from our schools regarding our first two weeks of remote learning. Just take a moment to read those. The Baiki School wanted me to report that remote learning launched officially on September 8th for all kindergarten through grade three students, and the preschool program began on September 15th. Baiki School is pleased that most students have been able to join virtual meetings each day and have been able to work with staff to begin building classroom communities, even in a remote setting. We are happy to also announce that some in-person special education services began this week in compliance of the governor's directive that we provide those services in person. And we are also looking forward to some writing professional development that is happening for all teachers in kindergarten through grade three on Friday afternoons over the next month. At the Memorial School, they ended the first week of remote learning with a near-perfect engagement. Staff worked incredibly hard during the six professional development days to create a revamped version of remote learning that addressed the feedback provided by parents and students. With increased face-to-face time with students, teachers are focused on building relationships in a virtual classroom community while establishing a rhythm as students readjust to school routines and expectations. Additionally, some in-person special education services have begun this week. Lastly, Memorial School is continuing to work on finalizing the front office relocation project, and they are also moving forward with the process of placing the school resource officer in the school in the near future per the agreement with the Seacoast Learning Collaborative. If you remember back to last year, the Seacoast Learning Collaborative funded 50% of that position. So there'll be more of an update regarding that to the board in the future. At the middle school... Staff at the middle school worked diligently in order to make the first week of remote learning a success. The first week of school was dedicated to helping students feel comfortable with their new schedule and classmates. Teachers went over Zoom and online etiquette and procedures, how to set up a quality workstation for online learning, and the importance of establishing routines for sleep, physical activity, and screen breaks. Finally, staff prepared team-building activities to help build rapport and classroom community. I also wanted to note that each of the schools were so busy with COVID and all the things that are entailed in COVID, we forget to celebrate that our schools are now reorganized. So we just wanted to take a moment to mention that as I walk through the middle school, and I've been through a number of times, or as I've walked through Memorial or Baiki, what I observe as a superintendent is that people look really comfortable in their new environment. The transition has been incredibly smooth. All the work is done, for the most part, aside from the Memorial main office. They're just waiting for some doors and some glass. It's not... You know, they're all settled in, and the work is done. So I just wanted to take a moment again to recognize the incredible efforts of Mr. Angel this summer to ensure that all of those projects happen successfully. I really can't stress enough that we could not have done this without him. He worked night and day to make sure that things were done, and they have been done exceptionally well. So I just wanted to take a moment to notice that we are forgetting to celebrate such a huge change only because we're so focused on ensuring safety and quality learning under these conditions. The high school. All students started their classes in a remote format on 9/8. Students in the SST program started their program on 9/10. And for those of you who don't know, that's the Seacoast School of Technology. And many of them are opting for the Seacoast School of Technology to meet in person. On Thursday, 9/17, administrators will host a virtual brunch that's open to any students, staff, parents, or community members. Information on how to join that meeting was included in the 9/14 of 2020 Points of Pride newsletter. And now that course schedules are nearly finalized, the school counseling team has turned their attention to post-secondary planning. They held a virtual senior parent night on 9/14 to discuss the college application process and will now be hosting in-person or virtual college labs for students. On 9/23, there will be a virtual college fair from 11 to 1, open to all students. This event will be for grades 11 and 12, and the list of colleges who will be attending the fair, as well as login information, will be posted on the school counseling department website. So you can imagine the tremendous amount of work that it takes for a high school to shift to remote and just do simple things that we used to take for granted, like a college fair. So I'm really impressed and happy with the hard work of our staff, and they have worked really hard at all the buildings to try to mirror what a normal school day would look like with remote learning, with regular class meetings, frequent instructional time with teachers, and meaningful work. From special education, I just... I'm going to take a moment to do a shout-out to Jody Guderman. We have a number of vacancies in special education right now due to various circumstances, and Jody has done a phenomenal job of piecing together the staff that we do have to do everything that she can to meet the needs of our students and to have students successfully come to the schools this week for in-person instruction for those who needed that. We are in remote... We are in Week Two of Remote Learning for Special Education Services, and it is going well despite those staffing challenges. Limited in-person services started this week, and our teachers and students seem excited to be back to face-to-face instruction and interactions. The department continues to work tirelessly on holding compensatory education meetings per the Governor's Emergency Order Number 48. So I just want to... For the public, I want you to understand that that means that they're having basically 320-ish meetings in about a month to two months, which is... If they make that deadline, I will be very impressed. That is, each meeting takes hours and hours to prepare. I'm looking at Dawn because I know she knows, you know, how difficult it is to... A one-and-a-half-hour meeting is probably 10 hours of work. So it's really impressive. And again, I cannot stress enough the fantastic job that Jody has done. Jody Guderman, our director, she's... Her team has worked... She couldn't have done it alone. Every coordinator, every person. Lauren at the Baiki School and Jill Lizer, they have been invaluable members of our team as we've gone through this very difficult transition. For curriculum and instruction on grades 26 and 27, I just wanted to say that Patty actually put the phonetic spelling of this name in here for me, so I just don't want to take credit. Thank you, Patty. Dr. Haines had Teresa Schneiderheinz of Alma came to Sandborne to provide gradebook training to our teachers. This training included assignment creation, viewing mastery of standards and competencies, and keeping track of assignment accountability. Much of the backend work has been completed by our technology department, including creating staff accounts, loading student information, and updating the standards and competencies in the system. Rosters and schedules have been uploaded for the elementary and middle school, and we anticipate that teachers will start to get more comfortable with the system in the next few weeks and use it more regularly. So we're right in the throes of implementation. Well, thank you, Dr. Haines. She's worked so hard on that, as have the staff and administration. Teachers are also preparing to administer the New Hampshire statewide assessments to students grade four through eight in October as required by the New Hampshire Department of Education. And more information about that will be shared with families in the next few weeks. Just a quick note about Alma. We'll be sending some letters, but I just want to make sure that everyone in the community hears that the high school and middle school are going to be ready to open the Alma portals online before elementary school. So we'll let everyone know that, but for those of you who... in the community who have children at multiple grade levels, we just want you to know that the high school and middle school will be probably up to speed a little bit quicker with opening the public portal, but we hope by mid-November to have it completely open and working for everyone. Really excited about this. And the feedback has been very positive so far from staff. Athletics. Mr. Dawson will be here later, but I'll just give a quick overview. We began our fall seasons this week with a golf match at Apple Hill in East Kingston Monday afternoon. Upcoming games include boys soccer at home versus Campbell on Friday at 4:00. Field hockey on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., home voices Oyster River. And the girls' soccer team opens its season at 10:00 a.m. Saturday versus Campbell. Cross-country cheer and football begins their seasons on the 26th. And schedules for varsity contests are available on the NHIAA website, and we'd be part of the weekly newsletter to parents. Thank you, Mr. Dawson. Again, he's basically recreating the wheel while he goes. And for those parents who have middle school students, he has told me to let you know that he is working hard to help them too, but the high school has had to take priority the last few weeks. I just wanted to let everyone know I did get some questions about homeschool instruction. And we have had 27 students, and I think Phyllis, it's up to 31. So we have 31 students who have elected to homeschool across the district. Out of 1,600 students, I feel that that's pretty fair considering the challenging circumstances that we are facing. Baiki has 14. Memorial had 11. In the middle and the high school, each had one. I got three or four more at the end of the day, and I don't quite know where they fall into that. Phyllis just let me know right before we came to the meeting. But overall, it's very reasonable and understandable. I just wanted to let everyone know that the administrative team is working really hard to plan for in-person instruction. We recognize as a team that with the relatively low transmission rate of COVID in our communities, that we want to start looking forward to the potential of having our students come back to our buildings, which is what we all want. We all want to be back to normal and have our kids back in school. Remote learning is going really well, but it's always... It's never a substitute for in-person instruction. Community members have been asking about this, and so I just wanted to let everyone know that it's quite a process to plan this. And so we will be sending out some surveys this week, asking parents some pretty specific questions about if we open in person, will you be comfortable sending your child back or will you be choosing to keep them home? And we want everyone to understand that based on that data, then we'll make a recommendation to the school board about next steps. We'll also be surveying staff about their needs and decisions, and we'll be compiling all of that information. Please look forward to a survey from Panorama Education this Friday. And it's important to remember that in-person may be Tier Three, which is cohorts, students on Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, or it may be five days a week. We don't know yet. We need to look at all the data and make a recommendation. So I just... I know that people are anxious and they have a lot of questions, and we understand and support that. And we promise you that we're doing everything that we can now that remote learning is up and running to get ready for the next round. It is important also for everyone to remember that if you're making a decision about whether or not you're going to send your child, the current district reopening plan is in effect, and students will have to wear masks if they come to school. So please, if that affects your decision, know that that will be an expectation. As was alluded to in my previous updates from the schools, we will have... We made significant changes to remote learning, and we are going to be having coffee hours at each school level, K3, 4, 5, 6, middle school, and 9-12 over the next couple of weeks. And we'll be sending a survey on Sunday, September 27, to get feedback about how remote learning has gone this fall. Even if we come back in person, having a robust remote learning program is going to be an important part of this year, for sure. We may need to transition to remote learning on a dime, so this has not been... This has been time exceptionally well-spent to plan this carefully because the likelihood that we'll have to use it again, like many of our neighbors, is very high. So we... I'm glad it's up and running, right? So that way, we're ready to go if we need it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the surveys that are coming out are really important, particularly the one about whether or not you're going to send your child to in-person school. We need 100% participation. If parents don't fill that survey out, we'll have to call you. We have to know because we have to plan our staffing around the number of students that will be coming to in-person school. I just wanted to finally just say thank you to everyone for doing such a great job. I know that this was a really difficult decision for our community, and I appreciate that there's no right answer. No matter what we choose as a community or our board, a group of people will be frustrated or upset, and that's understandable. But I just want everyone to know that I'm really proud that our kids have had a consistent and even start to the school year. There are many kids this fall who have gone to school and been sent home on a Monday afternoon at 1:00 because of an outbreak or have been told the day before school's supposed to start, "We're not starting." Our community knew that they had to have childcare. They've been able to plan for their childcare, and they've been able to accommodate the remote learning, and it's been at least consistent. I can't really ask for much more in this situation. My hope is that when we come back in person that we'll be able to maintain that consistency by planning carefully. So I want to thank you all for letting me share that very long update. I won't... For those of you who are new to the board, my updates aren't usually this long, but in this day and age, they kind of need to be. So thank you.
Thank you. Jamie?
So a question. Tom, last time you gave us an update, you included information in my notes that was 14 people were on leave and you're still managing and reviewing. Or is that about the same? Has it changed dramatically?
Yeah, it's interesting. We do have a number of situations regarding leave that are still in flux. They haven't necessarily changed much at this point. I think the real question will be we really aren't sure what decisions families and people will make when we tell... You know, now that we're talking about going back to in-person learning.
Right now, we seem to be stable.
It seems to... Yeah, it's right around the... We're in that 15 to 20 zone right now. There are some that we're working on every day. Oh, I thought of something else about that, and I lost it, but it'll come up later.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Committee reports. Policy?
Policy will meet on October 7th at 4:30 p.m.
The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met just before this meeting, so I will be recapping that at our next meeting. Our next EISA meeting is on October 21st. Facilities?
Facilities Committee met today. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 p.m., and the committee reviewed three of the revolving funds.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. You having trouble hearing me? Hello?
Is the volume there?
Yeah, my volume's up all the way. Let me try my... Let me try my headset. Sometimes that's better.
Thank you. It's an adventure.
Do you have another report you can go to while I look for it?
Yes, that's a good idea. Finance?
Finance will be meeting again on October 7th at 3:30.
Larry, do you have anything on public relations?
No, we haven't met yet, but...
Larry, can you hear us?
I can just barely hear you.
Do you have an... Relations, I believe we've not met correctly.
We have not met and no update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel?
Personnel will meet again on October 21st at 3:00 p.m.
I'm sorry, 4:30, did you say?
3:00 p.m. for Personnel on October 21st.
Jim, second call.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. So the facilities committee met today. The meeting was called to order at 3:30 p.m. The committee reviewed three of the revolving funds balances as of August 31st, 2020. The balance had not changed since the August facilities committee meeting. Business administrator Matt Angel presented a request for constructing a greenhouse at the high school. The committee discussed the proposed uses, and the committee requested additional information on planned curriculum and total costs to complete the project along with an estimate of the annual or monthly operating costs. The committee reviewed proposals by Matt Angel for several capital improvement plans for Memorial School that ranged from a new fire alarm system to paving. The current status of these and explanations driving each of the proposed items along with the recommended fiscal year for the projects, including going to bid where applicable, were also discussed. The next facilities meeting will be held on October 21st, 2020 at 3:30 p.m. Consult the sau17.net website for scheduling and access or location details.
Thank you. Student council?
Oh, that's why. We are... Since we know that homecoming is not an option, like the regular homecoming, we're looking at substitute options such as some kind of Zoom call where we rotate rooms or something. We don't really know what we're going to do yet, but we're looking at, like, replacement things we could do in a... To replace homecoming, I guess. So yeah, that's what we're doing right now.
Just public comment session. Any comments from the public? So our next agenda item is the public hearing. That was noticed for 6:30, and we're a little ahead of that. So I think we'll go on to Agenda Item 7.2, which is the YMCA facilities use agreement.
Thank you very much. We just need to make sure that the board was comfortable with the very succinct and clear memorandum of understanding that the YMCA would like to utilize the back portion of the middle school for the purposes of providing remote learning support for families that need an option, particularly those folks who are in, you know, essential services, doctors, nurses, teachers, police, fire. So they're really trying to work hard to prioritize those families with the program. And it will be starting on Monday, provided that the board is comfortable with the agreement. I know that you authorized me to handle this, but I felt like if I'm signing an agreement for facilities use at this level, we felt like we should bring it to you. It is only for this school year. So that is acceptable by law. We don't have to go to a public vote on renting a facility for one year. And again, as we discussed before, to keep the cost of the program at a minimum, they're going to provide the staffing and the programming, and we're going to provide the electricity and the heat for the program. So it's already being heated and has electricity to a point, but there is a small amount there. I'm just anticipating Jamie's questions.
That's page one.
Do you need a vote?
I do. I would just like a motion and a vote for this just because it's... It is sharing our physical space with another organization.
Do we have a motion on the MOU, please?
So moved to accept the MOU with the YMCA.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, discussion?
I just... I think it's a good thing that we're able to pull this together. I think it will help a lot of people. I've heard from numerous people, this is too expensive. I understand that. It's an option. And if it's an option that helps some people, then that's a good option. And they're not asking for much to be able to help out those that can use the help. So I'm anticipating this.
We... I am still working regularly with the area superintendents and the commissioner of education. And there's some more things in the work that I'm not ready to share yet, but we are trying to get money to lower the cost. So one of the angles that we have to work on the cost So um, one of the angles that we have to work on the cost is that the superintendents are all trying to. Set up programs in their communities. So if you remember out of sixteen hundred students, we had about two hundred people that felt like some support would be helpful. And, and uh, it's really important to remember that, that we, we really um, would like to see the cost come down. So we're. I'll just say that the southeastern group of superintendents, which is uh, Sandborne. Exeter, Oyster River, and all the communities in between, just to be quick about it. We're all, we're all working together to try to figure out ways to access um. Our COVID relief funds for the purpose of, of lessening this burden on the families that some families can afford it and some can't, and we want to help them. So we're working on it.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor with a roll call vote, uh, Dom?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Charlie?
Pete?
Larry?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
An eye for me. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. You.
We still have a couple of minutes, sorry, Mr. Stack. Um, how about if we go on to the MS twenty five?
Great. I'll try to make this quick. Um, we are still in the process of trying to update our, our, or finish reconciling our accounting system. So I actually don't have the MS twenty five, I mean, the D O E twenty five uh, for approval tonight. However, I can talk about some preliminary numbers. Right now, and we're still missing some accruals like such as a accrued payroll. So right now, unassigned fund balances almost two point four million dollars. And I expect that to go down once my accrued payroll is gonna um, uh, gets recorded. But then that includes reserving a hundred and twenty five thousand for, um, that was appropriated at town, I'm sorry, district meeting for uh, two capital reserve funds. And also setting aside five hundred and sixty nine thousand, two hundred and forty five dollars for the contingency fund. Now, the reason why the, uh, the increase of the unassigned fund balance is so, is so great is because we shut down the buildings. In the beginning of March. And we had a lot of savings for, from operations for not having uh, uh, students in the building.
Jamie?
Just a quick question. You, you're still waiting on accruals for payroll from June thirtieth?
Yes, yes, we are still because of all the activity that was going on over the summer. And also I was, I'm down three people right now. We are trying to play catch up and I believe we probably have about a half a day's worth of, of time necessary to complete the task.
Do you have any sense of how much that will be?
What, what, unassigned fund balance?
The payroll accruals that will do that will. Um, that will reduce that two point four million.
My gut is about a hundred thousand.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Stack's been waiting patiently. Uh, okay. Uh, I'm not sure exactly. Do I need to declare the public hearing open?
Yes, yes.
I so, I so declare.
Mr. Stack, could you come and present the, the, uh, the grant that you've received?
Right. Thank you, everybody, for having me today. It's great to see you all and I'm excited to be giving you some good news. We have the opportunity to be awarded a ten thousand dollar grant from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, and that's the purpose of this meeting tonight. Is for you to decide if you're going to accept that grant. Um, we applied myself. Heidi Levitt, our director of school counseling, and Carrie Alley, our career pathways coordinator. We applied for this grant at New Hampshire Charitable. To help us build up a career pathway for students pursuing advanced manufacturing. This is not currently something that we have available to us in our curriculum. It's not something that students can access at the Seacoast School of Technology. We do a minimal amount of this work with our internship E L O, Extended Learning Opportunity Program, but this would. Very much give us a big kickstart for this program. So the ten thousand dollars would be used to offset or to cover the cost to add a couple of courses. This year in our program of studies. That would help our students get OSHA certified, learn about blueprints. Um, and do some other work in the technical field associated with advanced manufacturing. And then the goal would be that we would have a partnership with a community college for year two for those students to pursue. Some tuition based courses if they want to do that. This pathway allows us to, it's very broad, so kids can get very specific with what they want to work on. It's accessible to all students of all levels. We're thrilled that we have a community partner with True Form Manufacturing in Plastow. The um, vice president of that company, Jamie Bazanson, is a parent in our community, lives in our community, and has been very helpful and supportive. With us as we've gone through this process. So that's what we bring forward to you this evening.
The next step would be to allow for public comment. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on the charitable contribution? Seeing none, I assume that we are looking for a motion to accept the contribution. I will entertain.
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
I move we accept the donation.
Larry seconded. Okay, is there any discussion from the board?
Thank you for the people to, that applied for. Appreciate you finding it. Appreciate you bringing it in. Let's keep fishing. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your hard work. Comments? Okay, roll call vote, uh, Dom?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Hi.
Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Eye for me as well. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item is athletics update.
Uh, I think, is Mr. Dawson gonna be here or?
He's like five minutes out.
Okay, great. We can just do the, the, uh, the medical supplies update if that's okay with the board. Mr. Dawson must be involved in an athletics event.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Uh, we've been, uh, starting to distribute these, uh, medical masks, uh, throughout the school district. And right now we have seventeen thousand, five hundred of them in storage. We also have um, isolation gowns for the nursing staff and special education. And right now we have uh, four hundred and fifty six in storage, but we've also been distributing those um, to all the different schools. Uh, we have uh, twenty five cases of hand sanitizer, uh, which is the gel for the, the. Pump stations that are throughout the whole building. Um, and you'll notice that we have sanitizer stations throughout the entire building. Um, and then there are also sixteen of those portable, uh, individual stations that dispense um. Sanitizer if you stick your hand underneath it and you pass one coming into the auditorium. Uh, we've received four cases of gloves. Um, we're starting to actually use a lot of those. Uh, we have fifty cases of alcohol wipes for um, helping the, the uh, teachers um, clean their, their rooms. Um, and then five hundred bottles of, you know, the spray bottles, because we're gonna give them commercial sanitizer. Um, that they can use in their, um, in their rooms. Uh, what we don't have yet, which is coming in October, are four electrostatic sprayers, and these are handheld units that have batteries on the bottom. They look like a. An electric drill and what they do is they, uh, they dispense sanitizer um, on surfaces and that it magnetizes the, the particles with it just sticks to the surface. Okay? That's it.
I think it's important to note that um, Mr. Angel came to me and asked me if he could order. A very significant amount of wipes a few weeks ago, and I said, let's hold off and see where things are headed. So just know that on the financials, there'll probably be a significant order for more. It sounds like we have a lot, but when you have sixteen hundred students and. Another eight hundred people, it's gonna go very quickly.
Yep.
Right? So we're, we're gonna be doing some significant ordering.
Fair to say?
It is.
Okay. Checking in. Uh, Mr. Dawson's here if the board, unless you have questions from how to vote.
I'm good.
Okay, great.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll work. I'll try not to bang it too much. Um, greetings, everyone, with my big voice. Um, wanted to give you an update on our participation for the fall and some things that um, public. Might want to know about how we're gonna play athletics this fall and what we're gonna do. Um, we have exactly a hundred and fifty athletes out at the high school level right now. With twenty five in boys soccer, thirty seven for the girls, cross country's twenty cheer. We have six. We'd like to get some more there. So if anybody's thinking that would be good. We have twelve golfers and they've actually played a couple of matches already, which is kind of nice. And we have fifty kids out for football. And yes, I'm gonna give you all these numbers. Let Mrs. Kennedy know I'm gonna give her all these numbers. I have this right here. Curiously scribbling and then she asked me for any notes the next day and I say things like, oh, I just deleted them. Um, at the middle school level, we have thirty field hockey players and we have about a hundred and ten-ish girls in the middle school. Thirty of them have decided on high field hockey. Fourteen in cross country and total in soccer, we only have eleven. So I'm trying to build up that a little bit and. Slot some games for them to play that are not unnecessarily. Where they get, you know, killed. We don't want that. So we're looking for that. The high school schedules are mostly done. We've actually been able to schedule more games than a lot of other schools in the state. Um, by a little bit of dumb luck, some help from the fabulous athletic director at Timberlane, who really helped us out. Um, so we have. Uh, the schedules that are listed on the N H I A A dot org website are correct. Uh, unless somebody, one of the other A Ds mixed them up. The schedules on the N H I A website are the correct ones and people can look there for the home. Home and away varsity games. J V has been a significant struggle. Um, there are schools. That are not playing J V at all. They're only playing J V in-house, and so I'm working hard to try to schedule J V games for kids. But that's gonna be a huge problem all year. Um, and we may only end up with five or six J V games to those kids. We're exploring some options there with things like, let's play a full field hockey game and then maybe play twenty minutes afterwards to let the J Vs play against each other. But some schools won't send those kids because they may only put eighteen on a bus or seventeen in a bus or we can do as many as twenty four. Uh, check that out last week, but there's some real challenges with J V. Um, we do have a soccer doubleheader coming up here at home on Friday. The girls are playing at three, the boys are playing at five, and no, it's not that way for any reason other than Carrie Alley, my head girls coach works here. So it's easier for her to get out there for three o'clock. Um, cross country has a meet next Saturday at the state park and people tend to ask about football a lot. Um, they're opening September twenty sixth at Pelham. They'll be playing the next Friday night, Friday Night Lights over at Timberlane. Uh, but I want to let everybody know that we've been informed by Timberlane that they do not accept away fans. So. That's very typical of what we're doing. Um, and I'll explain that in the spectator section in a second. But if people want to go to that Timberlane game, they are not taking fans, uh, even parents at that particular game. And that's the Timberlane school board and their administration's choice. Um, to do that. Here at home. Spectators will be limited um, to, uh, to just the parents for home games. I'd like to just sort of ask you guys about how you want to handle this. I know you talked about it last meeting. We'd like to have the entire families be able to be there for senior day. Um, which would be a little variation of that, but I think it's something extremely reasonable um, for us to do that. Um, got an email from a parent saying, pretty please, and I was like, no, you're right. I'm not gonna argue with you on that. Um, but that would be something that, you know, we can chat about if you want later. Um, tickets for soccer games uh, will be going out uh, tomorrow for the girls and the boys varsity games. Uh, no, the J V kids can't hang around and watch the game unless they happen to volunteer to be the ball kids that we need. And we have to do some things like asking our spectators to sit six feet apart, they mask, we'll be checking them on the way in. And, but we ask them like soccer ball rolls up to the front of you. We don't want spectators picking the ball up and throwing it back to the kids. We're gonna have ball kids to do that. They'll be masked and gloved. Um, at the game to do that. Um, of the opposing players will be uh, screened before leaving their school at home. So they're gonna get, you know, their temperatures taken and so forth before they even get on the bus. Um, and then we will, you know, basically accept those kids as sort of being in the bubble when they get here. Um, but if we have students who show up with their parent cars separately, we'll talk to the coaches about that. We'll screen those kids when they get here and make sure we're okay there. Um, spectators will need to social distance, wear masks and so forth. And we're also temporarily suspending concessions that I haven't quite figured out how to do that quite right. We're gonna try to get that back in at some point so the boosters can do their thing. A little bit later in the year. One thing about the protocols for home games, I have a document written down that covers a lot of this and I'll be sharing this out with the parents. Uh, tomorrow after I listen to you guys, if you have any questions or anything, we'll be sharing that out tomorrow to make sure it's clear to everybody how that's gonna work. Health wise, we've had a couple of athletes. This fall and couple's a very vague term on purpose. Who call in sick for practice for a variety of reasons that are not involved in, say, breaking your ankle. Um, but you know, something that could be a COVID symptom. Looking at the guidance from the state of New Hampshire, the guidance in our plan and so forth. I've contacted those parents immediately. We've asked those parents to take their kids to see a doctor and to get a COVID test because that's what's recommended by the state. Universally, the parents, whatever that number is, have all been absolutely fantastic about it. Um, and they're just like, yep, got it, totally understand. Uh, we've, we've got a way to get those tests done through the urgent cares room, um, in the area. We have not had a positive test. Uh, we've gotten some of the results back. Once again, I'm being vague on purpose. But that's the protocol. I shared that protocol, I believe, with the board or s- I was intended to earlier in the week. So I think you've seen that. And that was something we worked on, uh, to do the best we can to be fair to the athletes and also keep everybody safe. Um, so everybody's been great about that. And I think that's it.
I would just like to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Dawson for his incredible hard work. I can't stress enough what how complicated it has been for him to deal with the scheduling, the busing, the communication, the testing, the coaches, the. Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. And I didn't mention, I didn't mention that scheduling. Middle school schedules are coming. They were a huge challenge because first of all, all the schools are different. I'm not even sure who is a huge middle school, who's a little one. We just, we're smaller than we were a year ago. We can't have our sixth graders. And then you get an email from Colley Middle School and I have to go, I don't even know where that is. So I have to figure out that's hooks it. I know that now. Um, but there's, we're trying to get that squared away and a lot of schools at the middle school level are not playing outside of their own. Uh, area or their own school this year and some like Timberlane. Aren't playing any games for the second week of October. They haven't even started practicing at the middle school at Timberline. So. Those are the kind of challenge. We're gonna do the best we can to get the middle school kids a chance to play games. I have a couple booked. Um, field hockey boy, girls, B team is playing in Lunardary next week. Um, so we'll see how that works out, but we're gonna do our best to get them a schedule as well.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Dawson?
Dom? Thank you for putting up with us pain in the butt parents, asking you a lot of questions.
I covered you. I. It was a parent, you had your hat on.
I may have been the parent that emailed about, uh, senior night.
No, you were right. And I actually, if I may, I, I love those emails because there's things I don't think of. Like it didn't even click in my head and it would have, and I'm really glad people, the questions I get, I had a parent, I went back forty times on an email this week to figure out one of these health situations. She was fantastic. And just sort of, you know, we work together cooperatively to figure out the best way to do it and that's how I'm learning. So it's really, really helpful.
Jamie?
Uh, just a couple of points. Um, one is I, I support having a family there. I don't, I don't see any issue with that whatsoever. So I have my support with that. Two is when we made the decision to go back with sports, so we, we debated that and we made the decision. That was really the easy part. I mean, the hard part is making it happen. Um, we haven't been able at this point in time with the decision that we made, get the kids back to school, working very hard on having to do that. You actually brought some normality to this and actually we've got some sports going in the community. Um, and, and we're starting to move towards some normality. We've got the teachers working together. We've got much better remote systems than we have. We've got our kids playing. Uh, sports again, which is all good for their, their uh, physical, mental health and wellbeing. I know it's a lot easier said than done. Thank you for doing. Appreciate that.
No problem. And I think it's, it's good to point out, the kids have been really great. Um, I basically sat them down the first day and said. And I had an example from a local town who still can't start their athletic practices yet for another week. Um, and I just said, hey, you want to be them? Or you want to be us and we're here at practice? And the kids have been really, really good. I'm hearing wonderful, great things from our coaches about the cooperation they're getting about. You know, doing your stretches and getting ready with a mask on when your buddies are all there is really hard. Um, but it's also an example, I think, for when the kids are back in school. I don't think we're gonna have mask problems with the high school kids. I really don't. Because they're so desperate to be here. They're willing to pay that price in air quotes to be here. So I think that's, it's a real sample of what you're seeing in the kids and they're, and sort of look at that changeover.
I, I would, I would also echo that the feedback has been that for the really young children. That are back for special education programs, that they are being wonderful about social distancing. And masks and they understand why and that it's important. So I'm, I've been receiving feedback that, that, that is not, that, that, that is true at all levels, Bob. And I appreciate that.
Anything else? We'll be letting Mr. Dawson go. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Friday, three o'clock, five o'clock. Oh, actually, mostly you can't play, but I take that back. Oh, we may work on streaming. I get that's that all the time. I had to do scheduling first. We may be able to do some streaming off the game of the field, the games off the fields. That's not as easy as you think because we don't have any way to get a cable down there. We have to do it off the wifi or the cell towers and, oh, but we're gonna work on it.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Second public comment? Could you please spell your name, state the town that you're from?
Sure, Kelly Colligan, K E L L E Y C U L L I V A N from Newton. And I actually just had a, a, a simple clarification, uh, if I could get from Matt Angel, and I know typically we don't, you guys don't answer questions. It just had to do with the medical supplies. For, you stated we have four cases of gloves, twenty five cases of hand sanitizer. How many are in each case? I think a lot of parents might be concerned about that.
Uh. You know, I don't know how many are in each case of gloves, but they're just a box and I think there's uh, maybe two hundred and fifty gloves in a, in a box.
Box, typically, yeah, about that, two hundred, two fifty, something. Okay, okay, okay. I was just curious. And the only other question I had was with the spray sanitizer that you guys were ordering. Um. Which sounds fabulous, by the way. Um, but would we be sure to make sure that if the kids were in school that that was being done when they're not in the room? So they're not aspirating it.
Yeah, that's right. Um, it's being done at night and only the custodians can use those.
Okay, well, that was it?
Yeah.
All right. Next meeting agenda?
Uh. Well, I think obviously the October seventh is the date that we'll have uh, at least. The initial or probably the, the, the most deliberation about the next steps. I did share, Chair Baker asked me, you know, if, what if the board is kind of not prepared to come to consensus? And I did say to him, well, we can certainly have another meeting the following week on the fourteenth if we need to, but the hope is that on October seventh, we'll have a plan and a conversation. But the hope is that on October 7th, we'll have a plan and a conversation and make a decision and move forward. That's the plan, right? I just want people to know that if we have to meet more, we'll meet more. If we have to work harder, we'll work harder. We, we want our kids back in school as soon as possible.
Announcements, uh, the next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, in the auditorium at Sandborne Regional High School. And now we have a non-public session. Larry? Ready for that?
Okay, I'm ready. Madam Chairman, I move that we go into non-public session per RSA 91- A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2.
Second.
Uh, Don?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Pete? Jim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Yes, for me as well. Thank you.